There.
So, seven issues. That.
I'm sure you do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She wanted to say.
All right.
I don't even think so. I don't know. All of the information.
Do.
And you know, there's another one that I'm not even present. I think it's an expectation on that. It will be.
That.
We still have.
You cannot, you can't get rid of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're water. I could see she can't.
There.
Some. Oh, my gosh, you're coming out. I just think it's a lot.
I think it's for a massacre.
Well. But it's not really. One of the really great. I want to know what you have to say. This is no. But the line is. Then it depends. So I said, because you end up going through this next week, so I need to do this thing. Because he. So he has a lot of those things that I have to pay for this thing. We all have time. They can do this. They don't need to pay this.
There you go, everybody.
If we can't.
All right. You spoke.
Yeah.
Should I say Mr. longer?
Exactly. There. I don't need. I don't.
She.
Just make it.
Make it safe. Make it safe. By the way, I started to work that. It's important. I like to.
Great. Better.
Anybody? Anybody? Look. There. And there's some.
All right. The time is six oh three and we'll call for her. Here we are, roll call please. Oh. Is the recording started?
Yeah.
Okay.
Trustee Winkleback.
Your.
Trustee Bethel.
Here.
Trustee Price.
Here.
Trustee Stalin.
Here.
Mayor Wilcox.
Here.
Thanks.
We all. Roger the ways. Students.
Our gratitude begins to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which this stands. For one nation under God. And this is all the opportunity and justice for you. Thank you.
I have three revisions or relations to the agenda.
First, on your range, go three.
Okay.
I just need to make a correction to the resolution number. It is listed on the agenda as resolution number thirteen and it's actually nineteen.
Right here. It. Sorry, let's see how long I last, but I'm sitting here on TV and made a trip from here to Maryland back.
Unbound, the author group. The Dean's.
So.
Please, I'd be. I know.
Person's not on the agenda. Please limit comments to three minutes and address the community or address your comments directly to the mayor. Identify yourself by name and address when making comments. Comment should be courteous, civil, and kind. The town board will make no decision nor take action. Except to direct the town manager or town attorney. Uh, see that we have. One person that go out to.
And to the towns where just.
I.
Okay.
I have just a quick comment or just. I'll make it quick. I'm Tammy Clark. Um, just hot here to touch base about Heritage Days. I was gonna be here last month, but the Zoom meeting didn't work. And just wanted to thank the town uh for their support in Heritage Days. And see if you guys had any comments or questions or things like that, that uh you wanted to let us know as we start to move towards next year.
Okay. Um, the only thing that we had brought up that not made a decision now that I know of were the storage and the fireworks to purchase.
Right now, those are still in my garage. As soon as you let me know where they are, I will be happy to bring them.
Yeah.
Say that again, I didn't understand you'll be happy to what?
I said, I will be happy to bring them wherever you want them stored.
Yeah, okay.
Nice is bringing them down.
Yeah.
What?
Our time. Mike Nichols, our town manager uh says, bring bring them down when it's convenient for you.
Okay, I can do that. We'll bring them in the next week or so. I don't really need them in my garage.
Right. Okay.
We have, it has been brought to our attention that the. Couple of board members have kind of wanted us to take over all of Heritage Days planning. Uh, so the committee is discussing that. Um, if we can get some more members to uh join us and participate. Um, we may be looking towards that for next year. Um. So that we don't have some of the different factions that kind of did not work well together this year. So we are discussing that as a board. Um, and uh we thought it was very successful. Um, but we wanted to just touch base with you guys and see if you had any comments or concerns that we can take to the table as we plan towards next year.
Appreciate that and all the efforts uh about changes hard and. I see it's light, but anyway, uh. All of your efforts towards the rodeo and Heritage Days. And uh. There were plenty of compliments on the rodeo and out there twice, so. Thanks for all your effort.
Our sound's not working, Sammy. Can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay.
I see that my face is like when I talk, then it talks way after I do. When I'm looking at what you guys are seeing.
Yeah.
Are you, you can hear me okay?
I can, yes.
All right. Good. Thank you. Uh. She's back here. So.
I'm just here to tell you that. President, President Library had it at the event in the auditorium on Labor Day. I want to thank everybody at the town, especially the guys from the maintenance department for all their help. And we had a good day. Well received. And the biggest thing we need to know, you need to know is is that everyone that came into the auditorium on Monday, there wasn't anybody who didn't like what they saw in. I think so. All the town and everybody who supported that over the years. The remodel of the auditorium and anybody who's protected that over time deserves a pat on the back.
Well, maybe that'll spread the word if they can start going, they wanna have a wedding or reception or family reunion or whatever. Or events, you know?
How about movies?
Look, movies would be wonderful.
Roller skating, I'm all about the roller skating.
The picture you see there was, we figured is from July fourth nineteen fourteen. That day was the first day they ever showed movies at the auditorium. Um, that's. Just a piece of actual speed, guys. Oh.
Well, I never remember correctly, Mike, the uh. Did that, the the movie screen is still around?
I know we have it somewhere.
There, there is a movie screen up above the stage. There's no, I don't, I don't think you can use that. You'd actually have a different screen than they all do. And again, the screen is still up there with no way to get it down.
Right.
It's just anti.
Well.
It's like the project is, we won't be using, oh, 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 there's, there's new stuff.
But if that's something that somebody wants to do or the, or. The town wants to do, provide, you know, like the fire department, that's a playground, then.
Sure.
I think that would be a. A good thing for the community, especially during the winter time. If one of our guests at the uh event on Monday, Carla, Carla Diston was there. He said she'd love to see a film festival in there.
Yeah, we would need to have some community org.
Sure.
Because. We're all swamped. And it's not really the staff's job, we're finding out, to put on events and entertain the entire town, because they have a job.
I understand. I'm just suggesting.
I think it's a great idea. We need to circulate it throughout the community to see if you wanna, if somebody wants to establish a committee for community events, it would be fabulous. Completely agree.
I mean, uh, as Terry from the Lakers are talking about doing something similar over at Light of Parks. You know, going toward the. The fire station, but yeah, that'd be, it, I'm just saying that since. People gang.
Sure. Well, we at the President Library might like to do that once or twice during the year, but I don't.
That'd be awesome.
I don't think we want to do it every week.
Right. And if different organizations want to sponsor, if you sponsor the decent, you just, you know. But that'd be fabulous.
That'd be great.
Some of the movies that were shown on that day. On July fourth nineteen fourteen, you can still get them off of the internet. All side, all side of the movies is. There, there were three of them that were shown that day are still available.
That's neat.
I, I don't know. Yeah, I, I watched one with my son the other day when he saw what the uh. Menu of movies was. He looked it up and we started watching it was, it was interesting. And pretty good qualities.
Or good. Yeah.
Thanks to all of you for supporting that project and I, thanks to everybody who, who supported keeping the auditorium alive. And I apologize for not being there, my wife and I haven't been doing well and uh. So, well, we'll have more opportunities very much, yeah. They all, so, well, that's fine.
But thanks for all your efforts and.
Well, I thank everyone who was, was there during the, they liked what they saw. And I think they'll spread the word and. I think that's the good thing.
Well, hopefully that'll just. Grow into more positivity in the town and. Help us move forward.
I hope exactly.
Thanks. And I'm sorry, I can't uh.
I can.
I did, but. Is it not, not, down here?
Down here.
Down here. Yeah.
Yes.
It did, it did. It will.
Um, well, I am, I'm here to talk about the, the broadband. Um, I think we are a bit later, so might just wait my time for them, but I'm excited. Looking forward to, looking forward to this. The guys in the region ten are telling us that we're waiting on a power cable. Getting ready to, they've got all the, all their ducks in the hole nearly, so we're very excited. Obviously, we need better internet all over town. Like maybe make our Zoom meetings work a little better. But, um. I guess it's, it's up to us now to work together and figure out how, how to use some of the fiber. We'll have it coming into the C N L. So looking forward to talking to these guys and just sitting down thinking how we can, how we as providers, I know Mark probably looking to get on some of that as well. Whoever else, but um, I guess it's, we're down, down to the last couple of weeks here and I'd like to make a, something figured out with that.
Did you get the latest update?
Kind of.
If you and Mark want to read that.
Thank you much.
It's just the first page. You don't want to hold it, but I think that's just the first page.
Pretty good.
Um, that's all I have. Let's go into the rest of it, maybe. Let's see where we're at now. Yeah, I'm excited. So I want to say thank you, guys. Um, basically making this happen and let's. But so, get it finished up. Excited to get it rolling. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you. Item number five, consent agenda. Items with a routine nature, place on a consent agenda around the board trustees to spend his time and energy on more important items than lengthy. Agenda. Any board member or any member of the public may request that. And item may be removed from the consent agenda. And considered on a regular agenda. Um. Thursday, August fifth twenty twenty five draft minutes. B, America two fifty. Colorado one fifty pro, proclamation. Uh, I don't understand. So. Yeah, that's, that's it for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or?
I motion, we approve the August fifth twenty twenty five minutes and the America twenty fifty Colorado one fifty proclamation.
I said. New second.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we have a vote please?
Trustee Bethel.
Yes.
Trustee Price.
Yes.
Trustee Stalin.
Yeah.
Trustee Winkleback.
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox.
Yeah.
Motion passes union.
Okay, item number six. Bill payments made. Through July thirty first of twenty twenty five. Is there any discussion of those?
Yeah, I'm curious, is this report straight from this out?
Yes, ma'am.
And is it gonna be possible ever to get uh a record of deposits? Also, a summary of deposits?
I have not found a report that provides a summary of deposits. But I will continue to look.
Maybe call this at all.
I could reach out to them.
Yeah. Since that's our version. For the system. That we think well. I did have a couple of questions, but I. Got those answers already. Was there anything, anybody else? Okay.
Well, the Grand Junction Pipe and Supply, is that bill being forwarded to the school where it says build a school next to it?
No, it probably was not.
Because we're not supposed to pay any of the bills for the water line until we submit a bill to the school and then the school pays us and then we pay them, sounds very. Oh, lots of. Lots of changing of the hands. But um was this bill paid or are we approving it, it to be paid today?
Everything on that list has already been paid. It's more of an advisory because we were in the situation we were in. Um, so all of those have already been paid.
Thank you.
And there's no way I could have held them to get them for the board. Um.
Yeah. So when it comes to the billing for the school, um, water line. Are we forwarding all those bills to them before we write out checks?
The Grand Junction Pipe, no. And the only other bill that I paid directly um for the pipeline is. Um, F C I. And F C I doesn't get a check until I get a check from the school district.
Okay. Yeah, we have the K L J water line observation. And on call engineering support and water line valve construction and water line construction for eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy seven dollars. That was part of the agreement that they pay that.
Well, I got the one question I have is, is uh. Uh, item seven eighty four K L J engineering for Terrell, Terrell Parks up in.
It was review of the initial, the, it was two reviews. It would have been the initial review of the first set of plans and then it was the second review of the second set of plans that had come before the trustees.
See, the only thing.
Irish April, um, and that delivers the bill on that one is from April. So that's why um. It was worked out on the Terrell Park on their initial preliminary plan.
Okay.
Plan.
And my, my understanding is in anything that comes in from a developer, the, the developer themselves to. Pay for because it's their, their development, so.
If that's in the agreement they signed, I mean, so I, I am unaware of the agreement.
It's in the, it's in the municipal code.
Yes, so. Uh. I don't know, we have to need an anti looks more, but. I think we need to be reimbursed for. You know, whether.
I'm happy to devote some time. To figuring out exactly what invoices need to be sent, my, and I can work on it together, because some of it he would know better than I would.
I, I don't know what communications K L J had with uh the company that's doing the subdivision uh. Or not, so.
Have we been, been reimbursed for the dollar grant? At all?
Unfortunately, has been, we've received reimbursement for.
Okay, do you guys know off the top of your head who Grand Valley Consulting LLC is? For special structural observation? Is that for um approving the auditorium maybe possible? We don't know.
A little complicated here. Also.
Yeah, I don't know.
Grand Valley Consulting.
Says special structural observation. On May forty second at six eighteen. And then also there was um Wassa, Wasatch surveying for the school water line. You know about that one?
Yeah, they're the surveyors for. Or I think the F C I. For that project.
All right, well, part of our idea was they were going to observe, you know, take care of the cost of the water line. So I don't, I don't know if all these bills are getting forwarded to them.
I'll have to look at the Grand Junction Pipe too, because. We'll buy some stuff a while back, but I, I have to, you know, I might say.
Right. Right. So the meter, Mike, should be part of um. The tap fee. Correct?
Correct, I do believe they get, they got billed for that. I think we paid and I think they pay us back. Is what I said.
But when somebody hooks up to municipal water and they pay a tap fee, say I paid forty five hundred dollars, does that include the meter?
No.
A meter's a cost on top of your connection.
Yes.
See? Okay. All right, and has the school been billed for the tap fee?
That I don't know.
Per the agreement, we don't get the tap fee money. And so we accept the water line.
Okay.
Where.
And we shouldn't have any more, any more uh bills from Wilson's.
No, they, they don't.
Right. Right.
I motion, we improve the bill payments from May through July thirty first twenty twenty five.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Same.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, may we have a vote please?
Trustee Bethel.
Yes.
Trustee Price.
Yes.
Trustee Stalin.
Yes.
Trustee Winkleback.
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay, I have number seven. That's for Bruce Smith that day.
Um, a couple of things in addition to want to review, they um. Town attorney, you know, we should have an executive session. To discuss the water line situation in sometime in the near future. And he had conflict for the. Next evening date of the board. I mean, as prior commitments.
That he said.
Another date, and if it was up to me, I'd say sooner rather than later.
Did he uh, did, did he mention a day that would be good for him or, or for you? I mean, like.
I don't know what you said.
Was there a better date that he gave you that would work for you?
No, I tried that and he said. See what the board wants to do and let me know.
I'll let's do it sooner.
This item is actually set for ten on the agenda, the Senate hearing. To set a special meeting to discuss the water. I'm filling up.
Okay.
I don't understand why we're pursuing asking the school to pay three additional. Um, hydrants when, as you mentioned, the word you used was a purpose, okay? The purpose normally is for future development. School has no interest in any further future development for that water line. So anything along that water line from the school back to the source of the water would be there for development. And then that would be our business, not the schools. The school has their hydrant, they're gonna put it on the side, but there's, how would it advantage this school? Why would we require a public school to put in three additional hydrants? I don't understand that rationale.
Well, according to the ordinance, as always, the developer of the water line, uh, just as Carl Austin Tech developed. And brought in. The properties of the O B S church when they bought it. And then did a lot by angry, and he spent on that twenty acres, so he sold part of it to the O B S church, part of it to uh. He was gonna build a home himself where Lisa Valdez lives. And then the lot behind Jim Miller. And then the lot behind Jim Miller, but there was no sewer line. At the time, the only person was going to be the church, so but it was up, it's up to the developer. Uh, according to uh, had been this way or since. I was first on the board as a trustee that. The developer looking for growth, just like Andy. That company is gonna have to absorb everything growth there um. Part of the reason the school was built was. Because they would, you know, the the community as a whole, valley wise. What would the to project, they're gonna have more students. Otherwise, they wouldn't have built a a bigger building that would have housed whatever five or six hundred people. And along that way, uh. We have the. Uh. In Plateau City, you know, there's a street there, there's the old general store uh. So. There is. A connection of growth caused the whole. You know, by the project of the water line and and by just building a new school and a bigger school and and such a massive. Uh, project, so in the ordinance, it does say that. It is up to the developer to bring everything up to fire. Uh, code and safety for the earth state and. Uh, daddy. So it's, you know, it it's on their dime and. You know, the board was before Jim New left. He suggested to the board that we do did not get involved and and uh. Write the extra million dollar draft. Even though the board decided to support the school, anytime you build a big construction project like that. There's a contingency that's always been built in for. Added items or things that need to be corrected or whatever um.
Well, are dinner, are you saying they're classifying schools and developer?
Well.
They're not developer.
No, but they're they're projecting growth and they're. They're paying us back for the water line, so by by doing that, that's part of developing or extending our.
Whoever requests the water line, let me make it really simple, if you live out on the other side of school and you want the water line. You have to pay for the entire water line, whoever develops first out there, if somebody builds a subdivision there, they pay for the entire water line. Because we weren't asking for a water line, we were not, so whoever, and you can. You can search other municipalities, you can search our own municipal code, whoever the developer is, who's bringing the water line. Pays for the water line, it's in our IGA. They have the right to back bill to any other people who hook up to it. Because they had to absorb that entire cost.
Okay, so I understand that part, but I don't understand exactly why, how did we come up with three fire?
We didn't, the fire marshal and the code.
But I guess that's something to be discussed because that's contradicted what the superintendent said, that the fire department did not. Think that we have to have three uh fire hydrants.
Well, I put in a court request to the fire chief and I got to see the correspondence and they actually cut them a break down from. Several down to three. Saying, okay, the rest can, as stuff gets developed, they can add more, but I think Mike has something to say right now.
You know, they started with eight, I believe, and then C doc actually got involved because they said, then they said that. Five of them were pretty much impossible to put in, you know, it's down there in the swamp. So then the the fire marshal who is actually a contractor. By the state, so the state isn't really doing these inspections anymore, the fire department isn't, so they hired this company. Who is the fire marshal to um come in and. You know, kind of inspect that and he wanted three in, so it's actually, it's not our fire district or it's it's the state fire marshal. Who wanted the three.
How can that price be right? That seems, I could see seventy five for three, I don't see seventy five for one.
Seventy five thousand for one, yeah, I don't know the number that I don't.
That's what you guys had in your uh packet.
Unfortunately, the line went on without anybody taking responsibility for the fire hydrants. So you would think, somebody would say, hey, town, you're doing this, so we're leaving this open now and it's open from May fifth to May tenth. But that never happened. And I I got a court request, I read through every detail um. They were required to put in fire.
It's not activated yet, is it?
No, the water is not, and so.
I, yeah, you gotta put an extra speed and all sorts of stuff, I can put it in.
Right, we we got a million dollar grant to put in this water line from Noah. So if we have to take off the, take the price off the million dollar grant that the town paid, applied for, for our own. Because otherwise, the cost has to be rolled over to the people of the town. And quite frankly, the school has a hu- huge area that funds them, we have two hundred and sixty.
When when prices says, say, correct, so you know, if it was seventy five thousand, something has to happen.
If you look into something, see how much the water tank on the hill costs.
Well, and you gotta think, you gotta have people stopping traffic, it's all people, they'll keep bones down with one lane, you gotta pay for little people. Concrete, the plumbers putting in, I do not put in. Fifty, sixty hydrants, there were a lot of work, there were a lot of concrete, they cost a lot of money.
It'd been a lot cheaper.
And and while it was going on, period.
Well, still, before the waters turned on, it it is cheaper now to take care of.
That's kind of getting at the.
Yeah, rather than wait till next, next year, next great. To uh. Absorb those costs.
Yeah, I don't think seventy five thousand for one, I mean, that's it, that's not the numbers I heard, um, I think it's. It'll be somewhere up there, but I think that's a great. Now, it's not gonna be a lot more expensive if long, I think it's seventy five thousand or three.
I think that's what I said, uh, in your packet, I think it says hundreds or two hundred and twenty five thousand, talk about a hundred and ninety thousand, whatever budget was.
It probably depends on what contractor does it too.
And nobody's available right now. And the bottom line was that through the IGA, during about. That they were talking, that they were bringing everything up, your fire code and safety.
Did you review the IGA where it said that they would, Gary?
Hmm.
Did you review the IGA? It's a good read.
So between between the IGA where they said that. They would follow an integrity file plus the ordinance of development um. Plus the fact that. That we were advised or as a board, whether it was this board or the previous, doesn't matter, it's done, but. In the end, the school would go ahead and reimburse the town. For all expenses so that the town would not absorb. Uh.
Well, who's the building inspector on this, the county? Be their fault too.
Orange Shreiner from Dynamic Plan is contracted to inspect and to. So.
And I can say, part of it is, I think, I'm coming down, and he thought it was the last uh shift they get leaves filled with. That I did uh. Or for a neighbor over in Mesa. The engineer, he had it engineered, and then when it came time to inspect and everything was open, the engineer. Set a time with the county inspector because the county inspector. What's your brand name for this, I think the G R A said inspectors that really don't know and now they have the tech house into.
Well, our county ridiculous on what they want for inspections, pretty soon, Daniel, I'll have to get inspections for mountain radios, I'll give us houses.
Well, I agree with Bruce in terms, I think we do need to have the the executive session and and work work through this because of. You know, the thing bothers, we can't think this, this school situation where they not, maybe not be able to open up on, you know. On the first day of the new school, so I think we need to get it hashed out. And and see if we can work out some kind of compromise because, you know, I mean, the public, the school is a public entity, I mean, it's not like. You know, a developer has funding to develop whatever it is that they're going to, the school, the public school has limited funding, just as we.
They have, they have a ten times the funding we have and the school's responsibility for their funding pool is way bigger than us.
And they do a thousand times better for this community than we do. That's the purpose of a public school.
Yeah, but that's a matter of perspective, nothing would be.
Again, I agree with Bruce.
Yeah, well, that's special meeting, right?
Yes, that's item number ten, yep.
What's that? Do you have more to say, Bruce?
Did we pick a date?
Not till later.
Not till later.
It's on the agenda for ten. Item test.
Oh. The last sentence in my two paragraph, two paragraph, you know. Uh, Mr. Wong raises the issue whether or not I had the authority to write the letter that I did. And like I said, they'll leave the board saying if it's true or false.
I completely agree.
I was hoping you wouldn't.
True or false?
True.
Well.
Well, I didn't feel like I had much choice since when I did it.
Well, I.
Had to do some, get thing off the dead center.
Yeah, I think that you were completely in line to do that, thank you for doing that.
Well, and I I. Trevor called me at home to discuss it and we. Kind of what discussed what I just mentioned with you, Gary, and he had no idea that. Or he he didn't remember, I believe he was standing right here in the meeting when the attorney said, I don't suggest that the school. Get involved with an internal uh, having the town. Involved with the grant.
He said one entity cannot take out a grant on behalf of another entity.
Right. And um.
And we did anyways. And our second attorney said it was fine.
And it simply because it. Creates a horn, it's, there you go, the the school has their funds, they they got the the taxes. From everybody and and so we're not just looking at fifty eight million or sixty million, there's. There's, there's a ninety million dollar budget there, so. We can discuss that in.
And you, you're all aware that they bonded the project. You can't take the construction bond money and use it to buy school buses or boats.
Right.
It has to be for construction, you violate that and the bonds will become taxable.
Right.
So that's now that.
Right, right.
It would be the hugest mistake of all time, well, that's that. Seems a real doozy sort of years. Sword, it's kind of a good score even. Um, I included in the packet a. Invoice from. Forty pounds. And I'll tell you, when I saw it, I laughed because he sat in my office and told me that he was. Like doing this out of the good goodness of his heart. In fact, I told him that if I was him, I would have asked all the library holders and the gifts to share in that. But anyway, now we get a bill and I would probably just send him a note that said, no, thank you. Right, unless you all know something else, I mean, it's quite possible that. I don't know what I'm talking about, but board made some agreement with the moment before I was here.
No, he called, he called me when uh. Because I said there was, it was incorrect that there was no, why, he said there's no water rights. To set peril subdivision and handed me a folder and said at the bottom, you get what you pay for, and I said, forget it, I understand what you're saying because. I went through this when I first came up here and was on the board and then asked the board because that line. Had been coming down to our subdivision and the back field, I said, that that subdivision has been flood irrigated all these years. But when we closed with the Terrills, the Terrills signed that. The water rights for the subdivision over to the town, so it's the town's water, there is no adjudicated water to each individual lot. Or to the subdivision particularly, but. The water right belongs to the town, so that's the discussion and he, he had taken it upon himself and. Said that he shortened the line uh. To make it more efficient, so the town never had the opportunity to, okay, what engineering was done? Uh, who decided, he he did the work himself uh. Bought the materials, put it in and that's, that was the first that I'd heard about it.
Okay, wow.
I don't see any reason to reimburse somebody who didn't sit down and come up with a plan, we have our own staff, we have our own backhoe and. They need to be coordinating stuff before they pay, did you get any receipts for any of these things? Did you get receipts? No? Or do you? Who, who, who gave them a grant for fourteen thousand dollars? Don't know, yeah, I would say. No.
All right, well, it's easy enough.
Um.
Does it need to be voted on, are we good?
Uh, you just pervert direction. They don't need to vote on it.
Does anybody else have opinions?
No, we don't vote on anything I do, it's just, we just do it and see what happens. Do you want to talk about your public works employees?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was gonna do that, but we might as well. How do you stand up here and take a meeting? Mike, this evaluation and I agree with you too.
I don't know where to stand here, running around in front of everybody.
I wouldn't have idea what the police do anyways.
So I I did an evaluation on our, our public works employees uh and. After that, after beating them up a little bit, um, I did agree or I thought it was in good taste and good interest for the town to give them a raise. Um, they've done a great job, uh, there's some stuff that we need to work on. Um, and I don't know, I think that was just between us, but there's some trainings we need to start doing with them uh. And get them licensed up in the water sewer, of course, and they are willing to do that, we just gotta find time. Um, and I think it was much appreciated, um, they have really stepped up with me, you know, we're trying to do dual roles right now, so. Um, yeah, it was an odd thing to do, but we, you know, that was my first. Employee evaluation I had to do and it's not fun, but. Um, but we got through it and I think that we all worked from it, so.
I do have a question for you, Mike, I heard through the grapevine that you were paying for your own. Um, training or your own certifications so far, is that true?
No, no, the town pays.
The town did pay, okay, I just wanted to make sure that nobody feels like it's at their own expense.
No, I I pay for my own plumbing license, I got that before and I keep up on that, but the certifications I get for the town or through the town is paid by the town.
Right, are you using your plumbing skills through the town?
Uh, a little bit, you know, it's kind of, it is kind of plumbing, it's just a bigger size, you know, but. It's something that, you know, I'd like to keep going, so I just three of it.
Is that very expensive, annual?
Uh, depends on how fast I get my my continuing education now. But it's it's not, it's less than a hundred dollars, you know, so, and that's something I'm willing to pay because I had that for, you know.
Well, if you're using that for your job, it should be reimbursed, I use that.
And I don't do too much anymore, you know, it's it's just bigger pipes now and. And any licenses or anything I do with town, it's licensed to just the town, maybe more wastewater sewer. So.
Okay.
Once in a while I have to fix a toilet, but I got two guys that I raise it that can do that.
Thank you for what you do.
Well, as 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 uh. As we've said in the past, our public works next curve. Basically, the foundation of the town, uh, with the water, the sewer, the streets, the snow, all of it and. What I found through experiences as being in charge of the the plumbing county and learned from. Uh, upper management that. The best uh way to get and most efficient is. To give your employees or the technicians, whatever you like to call them, maintenance. The tools and the education. That they need to do their job efficiently and so things don't have to be uh. Done over five or six times. So. Uh, I'm a real proponent of supporting. Education and giving getting a. Especially. Uh, the group for they need to do the job to to take care of the town.
Appreciate it.
So. And and it and it turned out that, you know, through through the back surgeries and my manager above me. Once she'd go to Africa for six weeks or whatever. I would sit at the console like these folks do in the office and analyze loads and and rearrange those and in doing that. You know, who who is just like you would spend my, send Mike out to do something or. Cory. You know what their. Work skills are. So I would adjust the loads and whatnot and and we ended up uh. Out of the fourteen states that US West had. We had the number one results as far as efficiency, we our overtime was down. Guys that uh, it it was a union, so there was a limited vacation, but guys that needed to take time off or wanted time off. Were able to take time off during the hours and so it lowered the cost to the company. But that was just, I guess, on the job or experience something that I that I learned through doing that, so. Overall, I think it 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 saves the town money by. If there's something that needs to the public works. To make things more efficient around here. Then we certainly needed to be best serious so. Take care of the the public. Hey, Al, Bruce?
Yeah, a couple more things, um, was it, of course, I'm concerned you're at budget time. And I was wondering maybe they had in mind to do the budget.
I think that the previous board entered into, I remember reading, I don't remember how many years the contract, oh, sorry. I'm thinking like the. The audit, sorry, my bad. Um, are you up to doing a budget?
I've done a few.
Yeah, I bet.
Well, I just kind of look around and then having a hard time unloading that. Yeah, I kind of figured that, that wasn't, and I wouldn't be as smart as always, just hoping for something else to come in. Um, with that thought in mind, one of. Probably the biggest single item in the. I think that's probably true, and the and the general fund is the sheriff's contract. Uh, that expires at the end of the year, if you're gonna do something. Other than. What they're doing and you need to get organized and get going.
Can we please schedule a work session with Debeck? Um, Debeck was very interested in working with us. When we contracted Mesa County. We were told that I was. And he has a lot of ideas and a lot of information.
He'd be sorry.
It can't be any worse, Bruce.
So. In 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 your in your opinion, if we need to. If if we decide not to renew that, we either need to. Start our own marshals department by itself.
Yeah. Pay off with a million dollars. If you don't want to go with the back, do you want to?
It won't work.
Start.
It just won't work. You have a hard enough time and you have a marshal in this town keeping it in the town, they're gonna make an agreement where the officers have a. Almost a department to be driving around in the county between here and the back, it won't work. You'll be unhappy with it, the officers will be unhappy because you'll be bitching at them all the time and you won't save a nickel.
Well, he has um, other, there, he knows about the grants and he knows how to start up a marshals department again. And he has, he wants to pitch that to us.
I told you what I, you do whatever you want.
Okay.
I see no reason to change my current agreement, there really, I see no reason to, you know, we cannot afford. Setting up our police force, buying another vehicle, paying those salaries, having at least three individuals. I see no reason we do that, that we need to.
Need somebody here though.
We need somebody here.
Somebody here.
Working. And we need our traffic taken care of, and that's not happening right now.
That's not, when I'm alone alone, like today, when I move along like a clinic and I got people going fifty, but I'm being on the road. God, this show is so late.
Then we should let them know.
Well, it's.
We have countless times, citizens have called and called.
And one of the first things, the sheriff's department said, I guarantee you before we signed the contract that there would probably be. You know, more D more DUIs and more uh. Driving through the town as such, and I have.
Street.
Walking down the street, I have personally seen. At our. Down anyway, two two drive bys.
And you think that was not happening prior to Mesa County? You think that was not happening in this town?
Prior to Mesa, prior to Mesa County and when we did have marshals.
Control cuds.
It it was constantly, whether it was Jeff or Adam, I don't know, but it was it was constantly at night, it might be two o'clock in the morning or something. But it was constant.
We don't have any doctor at night.
No.
Well, I guess, you know, the first thing you need to do is do the math. See what it's gonna take to have a vehicle or two vehicles, what it's gonna take for the salaries of two to three individuals. What it's gonna take to make sure that there is trained at every qualification because we know prior to some of the. Some of the things that we had, some of the employees that we had were not trained to deal all of the kind of things that. Mesa County Sheriff's Department is able to do, so I wouldn't agree to it until I can see that that individual. Has the same qualifications as those individuals that work in here, the same qualifications, because if they don't. The liability is ours, it's not theirs, it's ours, right now the liability lies with the county sheriff's department. But but if you change that.
We're not exempt from liability, we're not exempt from liability. We are asking, I am asking, I have been in contact with the Debeck marshal, I am asking for him to come and get a work session. On alternative solutions and what he thinks.
I have not. Speeding tickets were given out in the month of August.
They don't release how many tickets, I've asked for that.
They release traffic stops, which could be stopping to end a person with a flat tire.
Yes.
Or stopping to give somebody a ride because they ran out of gas.
Right.
I live right where we have the traffic, I did exactly what the town board told me to do, what the sheriff said to do. And that was called dispatch, I called dispatch at six o'clock in the morning and told them, you got the eighty-five hundred, don't want to go out of town, where is anybody at? Well, you know, apparently in Culverin, crimes don't happen until law happens to be up here. And then, less than twenty-four hours later. I called, somebody was driving down the street at one in the morning with a light bar on, which is illegal, on a main road. And the dispatch told me, this is affecting you how. I said, while they're speeding. You, I got nothing, and then finally the sheriff called and he said, he said, and you can listen to the playback tape, told me. It's a small town. Why are you worried about people speeding? It's gonna happen. And, oh. So the sheriffs up here are what, nine to five? Within hour lunch break, half hour naps?
We don't know what.
I don't know, are seated, I have seen them more at the school since school started than I saw them all summer long in town.
There's also a responsibility of the school to pay a portion of their income of their. Which um.
So, yeah.
It's not happening, and we were told that that was not necessary.
The sheriff and I got in that class. It's frustrating because. There was a fifteen-year-old kid riding his motorcycle all over town, no helmet, no driver, no license. They told us, get a picture of it. Why do I, I'm not paid to be sheriff, do your job.
It's not our job.
And when we did call it in. Three weeks later, I'm like, huh.
Nothing.
Nothing. So, no, they're not doing their job. Listen to the girls at the clinic, they'll say the same thing, listen to the people who live up on the peninsula.
Date, I hear, I hear the stories.
The the whole community has has said, and so, and and one of the things that the sheriff's. Bar said that we would have, we were insured that we would have twenty-four seven coverage.
Yeah.
And. We're in Mesa County anyway. And so we're supposed to be protected by Mesa County. Um, I almost, I almost feel like what we've done by by spending three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is letting them hire. More staff. That's being used more time down in Grand Junction than right here.
And the sheriff's paying for sitting on driveways in Molina because somebody's dog got hit.
Yeah. And the control of street traffic, which we as the municipal town of Culverin should not be paying for all of Mesa County to be patrolled.
No, it should be the town in Culverin.
I completely agree.
I have, I will say, I have seen on Main Street this week, three or four times, somebody who was speeding.
That's good. I wonder if traffic tickets were issued.
They were. Some are a question.
I'd like to see the speeding get under control, and I know since I complained last time, I have heard that. One deputy is stepping it up and I appreciate that, but I'm not up to spending a thousand dollars a day. For the amount of services that we're getting at this time. And I'd like to hear other options.
I think you should get the uh, commissioner down here, pitch a fish, we, you know. You know, you're you're way far away, you still have to drive down there to get a vehicle title, you know, don't have that kind of support, you can't even vote here. Where's camp with any place mostly. Um, you know, this this end of the county is not serviced by the county, you're not part of this county, the county is.
As a municipality, we are required by state statutes to provide our own police protection.
Yes, I'm not really what I'm saying.
I I understand.
I see, I see you guys are neglected by the county.
I I completely agree, but we do have to pay them to be here, so.
Sure, we now have a special board meeting to bring this up and have a discussion with Palatino to back.
I think we need to listen bottom and see what he has to say, he has ideas for grants, he has ideas for mergers, he has ideas for us just standing up our own marshals department again. And grants that will cover that since we got rid of everything.
I I know that Adam himself wrote a grant to to replace his vehicle one year, um.
Oh, that the last one you have?
Not the new one? Not the brand new?
Yeah, the brand new one was never really good.
They had five hundred mile.
Yeah.
He also knows how to write up ninety with the school so that they can pay for their own coverage, because he does that in the bed. I hope so.
So we're on the grid.
Okay, um. I have number eight, October Fest budgetary request. SEVP and Sursa Insurance Premium. A presented by intern town clerk. For Tasha Big, lower supply.
By motion, we approve the October Fest budgetary request fee and Sursa insurance program. An amount three hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty cents. And we are also waiving the, where, did I see that somewhere else?
It should be a twenty-five dollars.
And also leaving the twenty-five dollar fee to the state of Colorado, the special events fee.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Very much none, we have a vote please.
Trusty Bethel?
Yeah.
Trusty Price?
Yes.
Trusty Stolling?
Yes.
Trusty Winkleblack?
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have number nine, request for sponsorship for youth. Dimcana status series P, BYAA.
We have two hundred and fifty dollars left in our. Discrepancy area funds and I motion that we give them their gold buckle sponsor in the amount of two hundred dollars.
Sure.
From the discrepancy funds.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. For the October Fest, is there any further discussion on that?
Yeah, we're in the.
I'm sorry, uh, uh.
Dimcana status series?
Yeah, status series, I didn't circle number nine. Oh, there's, anyway, got a motion in a second, any further discussion? There ain't none, vote please.
Trusty Bethel?
Yes.
Trusty Price?
Yes.
Trusty Stolling?
Yes.
Trusty Winkleblack?
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I can set a special meeting for discussion of the water line to. E F E B S D, but I don't know what school this is. Is there a a day that. Works best for, I'm open, I'm, well, it's on time, day it is.
I've got a boiler inspection next Monday, my friend, and after that, I'm I'm open from now till.
I'm going small next week.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be here.
You are your time.
But it doesn't have to wait for me.
Yeah, and in that uh.
I would ask that you guys read what the municipal code says. And spend some time on. Google, searching other, who pays for. Who pays for the cost of a water line to be installed? And what state statute in Colorado that refers to, you guys can find the information you need. And keep in mind our fiscal responsibility duty to the to the constituents of our town, not the entire community, please. That's all I ask them.
And since it is a a special uh. Discussion about the water line and it involves the school. Probably need to contact. The school superintendent because I believe.
I would get your advice. Before you contact him.
The, I've spoken with, um, the county attorney and his suggestion is that when we hold this meeting, we have an executive session. So that you guys can receive legal advice. So that's part of it, is I'm not sure we necessarily want to invite the school yet.
Yeah, I just didn't know if, if because we were discussing something that involved them, that they, if they have the right to be there at that, maybe, okay.
The public portion of the meeting, yes, they would have every right to be at an executive session. You do not have a right to be at the.
I have time twenty-four hours.
I assume that the attorney would come up to the Grand Junction.
Yes, he would be our person.
Okay.
Yeah.
We could do Friday morning, or you guys can. I don't have to be here. Of course, you know, I have a lot to say and I would like to hear, but I don't have to be here. I'm just. I do not know.
But I'm going on vacation in the second week of October, oh. I've got three weeks, three and a half weeks.
What are you naming this?
Saturday morning.
Okay. Then you see if the, the attorney can be here before Friday and then we can.
Let's just schedule it attentively for ten AM Friday. And see if that works for anything.
Friday the twelfth. Friday, the sixth, the fifth?
This Friday.
This Friday.
Well, I, I will be here. I, I, I'm leaving and I'll be back on the thirteenth. Go back to California, feed my dog.
Oh, wow.
Flying out tomorrow. And my family. Denise and the dog, they're all gonna come back. We'll be here until sometime November.
Can you do Zoom? Friday morning?
Friday morning? No, I, I fly out tomorrow. Oh, Zoom.
No, he cannot. We'll be at a funeral.
Okay.
No, you cannot.
Yeah, we cannot. We'll be at a funeral. Yes. Thank you, Denise. Appreciate that, babe. And it's not gonna be mine, I hope. Gonna bring the family back.
Well, we can try, we could try Thursday, AM at the during from the year.
Not tomorrow.
It's Thursday?
I mean, no, not tomorrow. It would have to be Friday here, as, as I said.
Friday at the earliest.
We'll come over at eight. Yeah. Yeah, we all. It doesn't have to be, then can be a thanks. But play it over at nine o'clock. I guess my forty-five minutes posted.
What's the community's?
Yeah. Me though, earlier the better.
Be in the states. And I'm gonna be focused on my family.
Well, Friday.
No.
At nine AM?
No.
Well, that's a little change.
What we're talking?
Oh, Carrie just asked if I can do Zoom when I'm downtown.
Oh, I love it. Sorry, I wasn't listening to Carrie over there. Sorry, Carrie.
So can we do this earlier? Can we do it at nine o'clock instead of Saturday night? On Friday.
That's fine with me.
But Dusty would have to.
About eight thirty.
I mean, it would have to be posted by nine AM tomorrow morning.
This is posted in twenty minutes.
Then you make the poster door.
That's why you're here.
We definitely need to make sure Bruce could be there.
Is Bruce still here, Mike?
No, he left. I think you guys are just cutting it too post by rushing the writing. Gary will be back on the, not till the thirteenth?
That's a Saturday.
Who's gotta get moving?
So we're regimented, what we gotta get in?
Yeah. I think Friday at nine's a little stressful, though, as the agenda has to be posted. And.
Is ten feasible, Dusty?
Or is nine feasible?
And it's probably better.
Cause she still has to confirm with everybody else.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna have to get ahold of the town attorney and confirm with him and I need to confirm with Bruce that, that he'll be around on that day and time. Um.
We shoot for a ten.
It's a little enabling and I need to have enough time. To where I'm not running, trying to get. Something posted and then it's a minute late posted and then there I am and now I've messed up everything. If you just give me that little bit of cushion.
Yeah.
Then we can shoot for ten o'clock and I'll let you know as soon as I know tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Yeah, either ten or two. Ten or two. Ten in the morning or two o'clock in the afternoon. I mean, if we're gonna go ten, we might as well go two. Cause right there in the middle of the day and that just. And it screws with stuff. So that's why I was trying to have it earlier, but like I said, ten, whatever. Let's keep going.
Well, I would say contact Bruce and contact the attorney and. See what's most feasible for that and see if we can make it happen.
And it's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have eleven broadband fiber discussion. You mentioned that they have one power line very hard?
Not here in Denver. It sounds like they're waiting on that last piece.
Did we figure out what the town has to pay for this? For the month?
Secret. Secrets.
As the secret, it's ten, I mean, obviously, we're three-year guy scandal too, so. There are no secrets, already a secret. I, I was down last weekend because the fire was not sold. I lost two or three customers, two. Customer that would be for years. Um, I'm sick of waiting, I'm down. I know it's not my turn to talk, but. I wasn't on the agenda, but that's okay. I wasn't planning on talking. That's good. I just don't feel like this is, you know, some sort of waste of time.
It's been going on and on and I understand your frustration.
Yeah. Well, the crazy thing is, it was, uh, mostly the elevens. And their time bomb on the GPS. I found that out Friday after getting up on top of the, in Mesa. I just got the, uh, the desk and then, uh. We just gotta take it apart, bring it down.
Have they settled on an affordable price for you?
Nope. You? You know what I'm saying?
And it's, I've been with them for twelve years. It's, it's comparable. Morning rates, I've seen in other places. What they want to charge me for rack space up here, I think, is ten times what I paid them. Other boys, their rack space that was frustrating, but I understand what I was paying them previously was not sustainable. My grandfather did as one of their first clients. I disagree with the, but. In, somewhere in the middle and, and we've had an long discussion yesterday and, uh, we will do this week. Um. I want them to stay around, want to say, see them sustainable, um, but. From my standpoint, everything was handed to you. Now you have to maintain it. So. Doesn't necessarily need to, you don't, you don't need to maintain your entire. Free state project you represent helping to maintain.
We're, we're not getting any money from Region Ten.
Correct, correct. No, no, I just, they, they don't need. Us providers don't need to pay for their whole free state network.
Yeah.
Need to pay for what was given to them for them to manage their twelve miles, that's what I'm saying. They need to manage that, but. They're comfortable. He's got great pricing. He lives in Junction. He's got some sweet deals.
We have to maintain all the, all the fiber, just so you know, the town.
Ten, back to Quebec.
From Quebec, there.
We have to maintain all the.
I just see that because I think you're responsible for the downtown. Then in charge of us, it's, they, it's responsible for everything from the C N L package. I'd love to.
I'd like for you to look over those agreements too because it doesn't seem.
The reason I.
It seems interesting.
Bringing them in to help this was, for that, if you were only responsible of what's here in the same job, but I would love that it all. They could have been there.
Well, the agreement was signed. It was pushed through a year and a half ago before this board took over. And not a single question was asked and it was a heck of a long agreement.
Happy to call them the wrongest.
Do, I, I work for.
They do have a lot of locations. And I think that's one reason this is behind schedule. It's a simple fact.
When we got wrapped into these bigger projects of the funding.
And I think, I think I would be surprised. Part of their high prices because C dot is probably. Well, these money here, we're, we're proving them off really bad. Um. But I don't see, you know, I, I think Danny and I could run this whole thing. You know. Probably make it better than this. I think right now. Letter you guys got there, you're just listing us as Barrow. Overo's got the, uh, contractor of the school, so.
Another company came in?
It's gonna be interesting too.
Their company came in to get the.
That's great.
They have them previously as a. What do you call it? They have some sort of government grant program for their internet and then they're the only, I don't know, I'm not approved to.
I am.
Give them that, what is the name of that program?
Oh, uh, yeah, there's talks about.
They, they have a previous contract that lasts until November. February, somewhere in there until they are able to look for something else. So, school has a previous contract through there.
Well, they should have put it up there.
Well, it's coming up too. It's a five-year contract and we both have seen it started. It's coming up this year too.
Is he doing it? I mean, it depends on the school and how they do it. You know, they can do it on one month or, you know, if you're even approved. Resell their.
But it's coming up. They had a previous agreement to this.
Now, if I'm wrong with, did you, did you say that? I was told. Uh, uh. That we would be responsible for the maintenance where from the back to the mid pot.
Let's find that out. I, I don't know. Let's find that out.
It's the last meeting in March. I think it's March ninth. End twenty twenty-four. Huge agreement. You can probably come in and request it.
Do we have anybody from Region Ten on with us tonight? I know we're seeing one, somebody will be here.
You do. Let's, uh, ask first in charge. They'll switch to know her.
Hi there. Good to meet you all. As you might know, I'm, I'm also have roots in. Plata Valley, graduated from Plata Valley High School and related to the hills of Culverin. And was in Mr. Winkle Black's class in second grade. So, got deep roots. In the county and in, um, the area. Most of my family still lives there, so. Um. I wasn't involved with some of those negotiations that were, uh, I was in part really associated with Region Ten when those were made, so I can't speak to. The details of how and the rationale behind, say, maintenance of the fiber, uh, going from Quebec back to Culverin. Um, I can tell you how this is being run everywhere else and that Culverin is just basically one node on a giant. Network that goes all the way from Denver to Grand Junction and includes nodes that, that. At the Region Ten built, they were really building it just to get themselves better internet from Denver, but then there were all these. I seventy corridor, uh, locations that. That, hey, we, we'd like to get some better backhaul, um, along I seventy-two. And so. The concept of the C N L is not new. It's been, it's been employed, um, in Project Door. In the area around Eagle and, um, all the way up to Steamboat and stuff for some time and rather effectively. And, uh, they pay actually, the individual communities up there pay a tremendous amount per month just to maintain that network. Uh, Region Ten does it a little bit differently. The only way that they may, they make income, income. For the, what the counties of the six counties of Region Ten. Have, um, contributed towards dolograms like for twenty-year IRUs for fiber going all the way with Z O and C dot to Denver and to Grand Junction and. Elsewhere, all the way down to, to Nucla and eventually that's gonna extend down to where I live, which is in Pagosa Springs, yeah, which is in Region Nine. Um, the only way that they maintain any of their sustainability is via leasing of. Uh, those, those fiber lines on a dark fiber lease. Um, in some cases, or not dark fiber lease, sorry, I'm sorry, it's a little bit more technical than that and I won't get into it. It's more of a. It's optical transport gear where they put very expensive equipment that they paid for into the C N Ls. And that provide internet to Daniel or Mark or Vero or whomever else wants to be in there. It's a. Carrier neutral location, meaning it doesn't, anyone can be in there. Anyone gets the same prices and those prices. I didn't set those either, but they did have a, um, Colorado-based, uh, internet, um. Consulting, broadband consulting company, do a survey of, of those to find what the, the current standards were, both for, um. The prices that they are currently advertising across the board for, um. Being in the C N L, that's basically commensurate with co-location is also what it's called, is another name for. Being in a rack and having space and having, you know, access to the power and the, and the redundant cooling and the, and the generators and everything else that goes with that. Um, so they do, uh, have rack space that they, um, that they charge for in a half rack or a full rack, um, increments. But also for either the internet that they're providing, which is. Um, fed from either Denver or Salt Lake right now is what the, the plan is and, um, is almost complete as Daniel. Mentioned, we're just waiting on Lumen in, um, in eighteen fifty Pearl Street in Denver to bring in. The right power for, to run the last router, the, the optical transport gear, which is as high. Very complicated and highly expensive equipment is installed in Culverin. As it is in, um, all the other locations along I seventy that wanted to become part of this network, which included Newcastle. Glenwood, Palisade, Rifle, um, a lot of Mesa County and Garfield County locations and Palisade. Grand Junction themselves and Pruda are all included. And, and Culverin got in, in a part of that. I, you know, from having grown up there, we didn't really have internet at the school. I think Mr. Shot had an email. Address and he was the only person I knew who had an email address when I was in high school, so wasn't an issue back then, but a huge issue now. I, I support the school district down here, Arxelota County. And, um, I'm kinda going through the same process where, and that's how I even got hooked up with Region Ten and that. We had a single century link line, a fiber line coming in to, uh, uh, Arxelota County. And we're building, we're, um, our fiber as well, all the way to, to, um, Durango through the Southern U Tribe. And then leasing from C dot going over Wolf Creek, just so we can get alternative paths into and out of. Our area, which is, you know, affects public safety with the cell phone towers. It affects the school districts and all the other. Organizations that depend on, um, you know, good, good broadband and especially high, high capacity like the spill dress or my need. Um, and we're, we're, I, I'm the broadband manager for Arxelota County in addition to helping Region Ten, um. I was already gonna lease from C dot going over Wolf Creek Pass, but. The problem is, where do I go from there? That gets me to South Fork. Um, South Fork is not where the internet lives. And Quebec is also not where the internet lives and. You, if you connect to something, you can't just have, you know, a C N L or even just fiber to, to. This, the C dot, um, location on the highway there at Quebec. You need something that takes you all the way to the internet points of presence. And, um, that's what the, the Region Ten network does. And that's what it's meant to do and it will, if you take advantage of that and then let, whomever wins the. Um, for, say for the school district, whoever runs the E-rate competition, and it could be any of these guys that are in this room. Um, they get a spin number when it comes up for bid. I think I heard that mentioned. They can all utilize your town fiber that's already built to just say, okay, well, we'll use the region ten network. We'll buy some internet from them. We'll. Patch that in at the C N L over to the school district and the school district from day one should have. A gig, five gigs, whatever they need for the entire school to be able to, to run efficiently and effectively. From that day forward. And what I'm hearing is currently. The wireless that was inherited, I think by Vero from Brainstorm is very unreliable and does not give the school district. What they need on a daily basis to perform adequate schooling. So this is all really the same thing I'm trying to do down here in Arceola County is what's happening. There in uh Colburn, where in Plata Valley um in general. Where we're trying to get better connected than the old sensory link lines um that we had in Arceola County. Or whatever it is that you also are using, I think it's microwave for the most part um over the Mesa. Uh, we're trying to get better connections into the world. Um, Mr. K, which I'm sure um. Gary, uh, Mr. Winkle Black also remember. Would often say to our high school, there is a world beyond these hills. That was his mantra. Almost every day we went into social study. And this is how we connect to the world on the, beyond these hills.
Hey Eric, real quick, a question for you. Um, so I guess the question to me before we started this was. Who is in the, in the region ten contract? If there was a break. Exactly in the midpoint between Colburn and Quebec. On, on that, on that line, if there was a break, who pays the bill to get somebody to run out there and fix it? Just, just real quick on that.
Uh, as far as I understand, the maintenance is on the town to do that. Having said that, you know that V road. Isn't going to have a lot of digging going on on it and I do all of the maintenance of all the fiber that Arceola County. Maintains, it's not going to be region nine. It's not going to be region ten, but we will take advantage just like you do with the. Uh, optical transport gear that's in our C N L and, and uh. Providing housing essentially for that equipment here and be happy to have it. Um, it, the, the breaks that happen within town. Um, from the anchor institutions, wherever you have your town fiber. Uh, that's why there's a suggestion to, to get a monthly fee for that. So you can build a maintenance fee. Um, that you can then pay a, a period on or. Deeply digital, somebody that in Grand Junction that has. Splicing capability and um I don't know about the locating. I think it's mostly aerial, right? So you're not going to have to do a whole lot of locating in town, but, and I. Understand that Mike might be able to do. What part that you do have, but. I think I've never really paid. Um, once I build up about $10,000 in a maintenance fee, that will pay for in, in average. Um, likely occurrence of a break here in Pagosa and you have, I have a lot more. Um, potential break points of crossings of highways and uh I think I've snowplow hit it once by the school when they, you know, we're going up an alleyway. Um, there, there's at times it happens, but the average cost per fix was about five to $7,000. I never really have had more than once a year. Usually it's one. Not even every year. Uh, and that's here. I think in Colburn, um, the way I've seen your network, um, and that, especially that connection from. To back to Pagosa, it's just maybe a washout is your biggest issue of uh. If you actually had a flash flood that took out um where that's buried and it's usually I think about four foot down. So that's pretty unlikely even in itself in the road, but. I, yes, that's what I, my understanding is, I, like I said, wasn't part of that negotiation is that. The town is responsible for the maintenance, but my suggestion is take those internal funds that you do to lease to the, the fiber in town. And build up a maintenance fund and then you can, you can fix splice cases when they get broken at some point and like after. Ten years and start to leak. Um, if there is, you know, something that happens or, you know, somebody hits a pole and knocks it down there, yeah, that. Usually you can recover that cost from. If it's a contractor or commercial entity, you can recover that cost from uh their insurance company, but you still have to pay it usually. To get the guys to fix it first and then you try to recover that afterwards. So it's good to have a fund, even if you're going to recover your cost. Did I answer your question? I mean, so much as I could.
Yes, could you um find that portion in the agreement and send that over tomorrow?
Uh, the portion that talks about the maintenance of it, I, I'll, I'll ask Michelle to find it for me or one of the. Gals in region ten for sure.
Thank you very much.
I'd love for you to read the whole concept supposedly.
From, from what I understand, there's already just since the fiber was installed, it must be, there's already. Uh, the cloud cause been exposed through washouts or flash floods, whatever.
I, I don't know anything about that. So if it has been, that's news to me, but as far as um. Maintenance of that, if there are areas that are subject to flash floods, I would hope that they, the installers would have put some level of. You know, extra protection against that or it might be wise to. Have um somebody from maintenance do that, whether it's a meshing system or something to just kind of protect it from actual washout. Um. Yeah, in general, I mean, just the, the conduit being exposed is not going to cause a problem. It's what, you know, might happen after that. If a rocket's, you know, dropped on it or. Somebody drives on it. Uh, while it's exposed. Um, we've had washouts here between our beliefs and Pagosa before and it's, it's never caused an outage, but it, you know, is something when it's exposed, it does need to be reburied.
Right. No, I, I was just from working through a quest communication scene, even critters. Two through it. Just I, I don't know if they feel a frequency.
I, I've never seen them. I'm sorry. I didn't know you were finished. Um. You get critters, you said? I, I have never seen them shoot through an H D P E standard um conduit. I have had them, I've had beavers shoot through cable, but there, and some of the. Areas that I've. You know, buried up here, but I've never, certainly critters can be an issue. Uh, but it's generally H D P conduit is, is pretty robust.
Okay. What is, what, what is the uh? So the proposed. Rental of the rack space. That the ISP asked to pay and then. When the customer ends up. Uh, having to, because. Just like these tariffs that are going on, the customer, they're, they're going to have to pass. Along or up their rates. In order for. Then to stay in business. What are we looking at for the customer?
Well, there's a cost to, there's a cost to doing business when you're in the, in any kind of business and internet service provider is no different. I. I do my own small Wisp and yeah, there's some overhead that I have to pay for my bandwidth um for. Um, you know, whether it's rack space or tower space, uh, there's all these fees that are associated with it and you. Do generally try to charge enough. Um, to, to make a profit at the end of it, but as far as the internal uh financials that's going on with each of your ISPs, I can't speak to those, but. Others here in, in uh, in region ten don't seem to have a problem. I've flooded that same pricing to. Um, the, what we're setting up here in Pagosa and I have not gotten any pushback from the ISPs here as being what they. They recognize that it's an expensive pro- uh prospect to run a, a network system. And, and it's in everyone's interest that it is sustainable, which is really all reason ten is, is just a collection of, you know, the governments of. Those six counties and. You know, so anything that they have ever tried to do, and they've done it for over 10 years, as Daniel said. Um, is try to maintain a level of sustainability, not um profit, because at certain point. Dola doesn't want to pay for maintenance when you have to do a refresh. They need you and they actually some a lot of times require you to show. They have the capability of sustaining the network on its own. Uh, so we're not a private, um, region ten is not a private company, um, and they don't have venture capitalists backing. They don't have um in, any other ways to um, you know, get. A line of credit even to maintain their network. They need to get to a level of sustainability and if. They can actually lower the prices at some point across the board and still be sustainable. That may happen. Um, and there is some level of give and take that does occur. Uh, when we hear that, you know, okay, well, I'm paying this much somewhere else. So if they do get a comparable. That's actually comparable what reason tends apples to apples situation is, they will bend, they will adjust to that. Um, so. Uh, what I could say is I, I have seen nothing thus far that should prohibit. The, the use of this and the improvement of service that it provides for backhaul internet. Uh, from making it for that, the. Any company with. At least several hundred subscribers, if not several thousand. Um, I guess there's what? How many? Twenty five hundred in the valley these days? How many is there?
You can't count the valley. You can only count the town. It's one hundred and eighty locations because this is.
This, this. The, the, uh, the, the actual C N L was built in the town, but not only for the town. I mean, I'm, the hope is everywhere that is. The hope is everywhere that is.
You want to follow down forty five and a half to county residents.
My, my hope is. My, can I speak please? Um, my hope is that, um, and I think everywhere is that. The I, the fiber running into Colburn would be used to serve greater Plata Valley. Residents and that's what the ISPs there are already doing and my, my family being amongst them would benefit from. This greater internet with actually it, what's going to be less cost per, per uh megabit. Um, and certainly more reliable. That's what has been available in the, the valley before. That it's not, that's not the pricing that the ISPs here um should be limiting themselves to is several hundred. Uh, residents of Colburn because that's not what they're doing now.
Oh, Eric, yeah, I, 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 I've never talked to a person and I'd hate to ambush you here in this meeting. I, I've been around since uh Eagle Net. And Eagle Net was lower per price per megabit. Than what you guys are quoting. Also, I've had other service with region ten. And. You know, didn't pay that high price. Your prices have been all over the board. As currently, I guess they should, well, or over the years, probably be a better way to put it. Um, but now you're, you're charging more. Than the average provider, uh, whether it's Fast Track or somebody else. So that's where I came from.
I wasn't here during Eagle Net. I'm aware of its, of its failures though. Um, yeah, but what I can see, the prices that we're quoting. Are being met and accepted by other providers within the Grand Valley and other places. So it's, um, it's not that we can do a scaled approach to where somehow it's going to be. Less per megabit um in. Uh, Colburn and Plata Valley than it will be elsewhere. At the back or parachute or Glenwood or any of the other places that it is being accepted. So. If there are other like apples to apples comparisons that you can provide, I have seen them. Uh, adjust pricing uh to try to meet that. And so if you have that, then please provide it. Um, is what I would. Uh, advise you to do, Mark.
Well, it should be based on the population, whether we go with the twenty two hundred or if we go with one hundred and eighty. But if you're case, that's not a, a high quantity. We're, we're talking about Delta County, the town of Delta, Montrose, Grand Junction. Brutus, you guys mentioned, Hawaii is from Brutus. Um. You know, it's not. You know, or there, there's plenty of service everywhere, but there's not, there's not that much competition here. And yeah, Daniel. Starlink now too.
I'm, I'm really not gonna, I'm not going to argue about what. You think that the pricing schema should be based upon. I'm telling you what others are paying.
Three years ago. For the start it is. But it's not your fault. You are, what is that?
I just have something to say that concerns me because we have two local providers that bust. Their butt to provide for us. And um, if they have to double their pricing to accommodate. Us, we'll go, we'll switch to Starlink and we don't want to see our local businesses go out of business.
Everywhere else this is being used that I have seen employed as far as the pricing that is being also offered. For rack space and internet and transport. To uh the Colburn C N L. The providers are offering gigabit service for fiber for $60 a month and they're. Doing less than a hundred dollars for wireless. So there shouldn't be any reason that that can't also be the case in Colburn and Plata Valley. And I'm saying this as an ISP myself in a small form of a Wisp, Wisp. These prices are not going to jack up their prices unless they choose to do that. It is just a part of the overhead of running a business.
Mark, how many clients do you have customers?
Total?
In this area, not everywhere.
Eight, about eight hundred Mesa County.
How, in just Colburn area.
I have like fourteen people on fiber.
Okay.
Of the hundred and eighty locations. So take rates up and that grade either. So, yeah, fourteen times sixty.
Is that your only, is that your only customers? Are there fiber customers in Plata Valley?
No, I. For, for fiber, yeah, that's what he says for fiber. He's got fourteen, but.
What about altogether?
I think I have like the hundred maybe. The whole, the whole valley maybe. I have to look. It was. And just.
And what about, what about you, approximately, Daniel?
Well, they're about probably three fifty in the valley here.
And, and it can be scaled down to the lowest that the, that it's being offered is a gigabit of D I A, which is direct internet access, meaning getting. Internet from the wholesale provider. At uh the C N L that they can use for any of their customers, no matter whether they're fiber, whether they're fixed wireless. Whether they're cable, all those can be fed by this backhaul and it's. Made redundant. So if you get a fiber cut in Glenwood Canyon, it will route out to, if you're buying that. Um, in internet access, it will route to Salt Lake. It will still get you out. It's made to be redundant. This is all part of their eight hun- what's going to be an eight hundred mile loop that goes through Pagosa. That makes it so the western slope is finally not dependent on places like sensory link to get these dependencies. Um, redundant services. And so. I think, you know, what it is that's being provided is not, can't be. Um, undersold. Or oversold, it can't be oversold. As far as what is the difference from what it is. Previously about, available in these small mountain communities, including mine and including yours. This is something that I've been waiting for, for a long time. And so the pricing, while I, I don't think it's outside of the bounds of what is um. Is, is normal and, and Mark's welcome to bring in examples of something that he feels is different to reason ten. And again, I'm not the one that sets the prices. Um. The differences in kind of what's being provided here is something that, that Plata Valley has never had. And I'm, I was almost astounded when I heard that that was getting built across the road because. The fact that there's um no fiber that comes in as a backhaul into Plata Valley. And Colburn is something that makes it uniquely isolated from a network and internet standpoint and, and it has. There has been many times I've been up there and had, and could not work uh pre-Starlink. Um, because there was just no, something happened to your backhaul and it was down and you didn't have redundancy. You still have some problems with redundancy just on that path. And it'd be great to have two paths. That's, you know, but that's not all with the luxury that we, you know, we can have from day one and it, you know, would have to go a different. Path than it does now. So getting this one currently set up. Working and active is I, the, the situation that I think we all want to see happen. And it's getting, I mean, it's close enough to have, would just be waiting on a, a power cord and. Um, and Pearl Street and the, and the routers to be programmed for that to be, become available to uh Daniel, Mark and uh. And others, uh, Vero being um one that I know is very interested in it for the school under their current E rate contract.
Well, you know, my point is it'd be, you know, the rate. I mean, the, the, if, if we can actually have redundancy of what at the rate you're talking. That's one thing, but it's not, you know, we, I, I've got to still maintain my radio network because. You're going to have this break either on V road or something like that. So I saw to maintain the infrastructure I already have. It's just, this gets to be a, another. Route. So now we do have a secondary route.
Well, I, I would think you would want it to be your primary route. Um. The speeds that you're seeing you from Grand Junction right now, when they're doing the testing on the optical gear from Grand Junction. To Denver was less than three milliseconds um as of speed and, and for, you know, those of you that are ISPs in the audience, you, you know that that's pretty good. Um, so it's both, it's both and it's using level three as the primary provider, which is different than all the other providers. I don't know who you're using as your. Wholesale for bandwidth um upstream of your network, but. Most likely it's coming from either Cogen or Hurricane. Well, this one isn't, so it's redundant on that level as well. So it's got multiple layers of redundancy. That will help um maintain service for your customers, uh, even if we do have. Some uh failures. Some, uh, failures within the upstream networks. There's, it will fail over to alternate directions.
Well, the current western slope price from Fast Track being a, a little provider here, western slope out of, uh, Durango. Is about eleven hundred dollars for a five gig circuit. Which is pretty much what I would want out of Colburn. Um, not a thousand dollars or about fifteen hundred dollars for a one gig circuit. A five gig circuit for eleven hundred dollars. And that, that, that's.
Can we limit this to a discussion of. Between Reason Ten and yourself. I, I just don't think this is the forum to discuss pricing and I was not prepared to do that.
It happened three years ago, but we weren't invited at the time to be part of this. And, uh, this was, this seemed to value it. I don't want to keep beating everybody's time. And I think that, that was the last thing I did want to say. So Eric, I apologize for that, but I did, that's one of the point. The discrepancies will, where you guys are at compared to the rest of the world. Or, or Western Colorado.
I, I don't know that you're, uh, characterizing the whole picture of what the network is and we'd be happy to do. A demonstration on that in case there's people that are, are unaware of that. Corey is on a plane. Today, so he couldn't be here, but he does a very good demonstration of what this network is, how it benefits. The citizens of Western Slope and, and. Um, without getting into pricing, pricing something that you and Daniel and, um. Whomever Bureau assigns to be their, their negotiator need to talk to us about. I. I, I, I think from the standpoint of what it really can do for the town, what it's going to do for Pagosa. Um, is it's going to get, it's going to make, um, our access to the internet something that I can now rely on to. Use cloud services for all of our school districts and all of our city and county. Facilities, whereas before we had to run, um, very expensive, um, ex, uh, servers, uh, with storage area networks. Well. Those are getting harder and harder to maintain anyway because of where the world is going, as you guys probably know. So we've got to have. Highly redundant, highly capable internet services to stay competitive with the world. And that's what this provides. So if you want a demonstration at some point at the town council. Would like one to show what this network really is about now that we're on the cusp of lighting it up. I think we'd be happy to do that.
Any other discussion?
No.
Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, Eric. We'll let, we'll let you guys, uh, negotiate, communicate and, uh, read over the contract and go from there. See what happens. I know there's a lot, a lot of people that have waited, as Mark said, it's. Three, three or four years, uh, passed. Uh, what was that? So there's a lot of people that have. Given up and they've just gone with Starlink and, and that Starlink, they. They've commented on, you know, the downs low base, whatever, that they won't go with anybody else. So.
Yeah, I'm in this, I'm in the same boat down here. I've been working on getting the fiber of a roll freak now for eight years. Um, and so I feel your pain. Um, it, it's, it's a long, when you talk about middle mile real fiber. Build outs and all of this, it's, uh, there are a lot of contingencies, there are a lot of components, but once it's in place, I think you guys will definitely see the difference. So yeah, I think you should be happy that it's finally coming to a conclusion.
Well, the difference is here, we've been promising, not me. The people have been promised over and over by the end of the year, every single year, that it was coming.
Uh, thankfully I can, I can personally, I can personally say I was not the one that made that promise.
Yeah.
So I, I, I personally can involve myself of that, of having made that mis- misstatement, but yeah, I, I, there's. Everything is in place to have this light lit up, um, and I'm looking very much forward to it. So I hope you guys are too.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll let you guys discuss this. In the meantime, we'll, we'll take a five minute break. Yeah, stretch your legs, whatever.
Thanks, Eric.
Eric.
Mike's got it now. He's got another commitment.
All right, thank you, Eric.
We'd like to touch just real quickly on, it sounds like Region Ten is nearing very close to the completion. We will be turned up hopefully day one where I'm going to go find somebody. But we should be, we should be turned up immediately. We need to work with the town. That's, that's what I need you guys for, to figure out what. You guys figure out fair and equitable price to let us on. I'm sure Mark wants to jump on downtown as well. I don't know. Um, but to get from the CNL to where we can serve our customers. Um, I'd love to set down a meeting next couple of weeks, try to figure out what that looks like. Um. I don't think I can make the next board meeting. I've got a lot of construction to do between now and then. And I would love to do that sooner rather than later.
Do you have his phone?
So we've got eleven o'clock on Friday. Um, I'd love to sit down and spit balls some ideas to what is fair for you guys.
Do you guys have, um, pricing suggestions about stuff comparable to other areas of this?
Mark has more pricing. I don't know about the middle mile stuff, but on fiber. I think the region ten pricing was, looked good to me. Um, yeah.
We have to come up with a price for the.
And the town attorney does have a meeting scheduled with Region Ten next week.
I, in the, in the papers there, I think they had a in-town circuit price.
We don't want to press our local people on those things.
Sure, absolutely.
But we do have to pay to maintain everything and it was put down a road that washes out every winter.
Well, there's two of us that can go splice fiber. Without calling somebody for a thousand dollars, go do it. So if you got a bad boat, with bad splicers, we'll figure it out because I'm not going to be down while. We wait for somebody to Denver to go. Pay a thousand dollars from us.
I'd like for you guys to look a little stunt because it was never discussed and I'm not sure if they entered into a long-term contract of appearing to, to do all repairs.
That would be not a good idea.
Right. And I know it can go last over and over again, like, do we have the right to call anybody? And they said, yeah, but I mean, what's in writing is what matters. So.
So let's look it over and.
So that's something you turn it, the attorney is going to.
Yeah, he already has a meeting scheduled next week with Region Ten to go over. Cause he knows we're trying to get this finalized and so.
So I would suggest that we have a discussion after the attorney has a discussion with the reason then.
Okay, let's just make sure on that is appointed. Upon discussion to try to figure out that pricing. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm not here. I just beg of you guys, if we run off our local providers, it's not going to be pretty. You murder me them. So.
So it's really expensive for everybody.
Even if they suggest an outrageous price, we have to negotiate. I have to admit this happened.
I think also our area is probably the smallest. The, the, what they've done. Um, you know, you can't say further, you can't say Montrose, you can't say it's really, it's dirt cheap injunction, it's cheaper than Montrose, it's dirt cheap in Denver.
There's competition and there's big people there, there's big, and that's why.
Players, we can all, like pricing against, like you said, we can, we can price today. There's nobody to fight yet against in the Colburn. So. I feel they're being fair. I've got good pricing from them in the past. Um. Yeah, it just comes down to what does the town need for this downtown loop and, and. That all obviously works in the whole equation.
Well, that's, that's the whole reason that Lumen, Lumen has been cherry picking and staying in metropolitan areas.
Yeah. Well, they never ran fiber up here. We wouldn't be here. If Lumen, if Lumen kept up with us, the state, they golden, we wouldn't be here.
Yeah, trying to get that done for my seventy of the. Of the highway in nineteen ninety and that, and then what's it time to do if, uh. Uh, and get the property owners to understand that. The BEC would have retired or given, gave a lot of that instruction cost to bring it up. If, if they would have just put in the orders and then. Once it was brought out, they could have cast the orders. Uh, that didn't happen and that's, so we're at where we're at. Okay.
So can we schedule a meeting after that, Region Ten meeting?
That, a- a- after the, yeah, after the, yeah, attorney talks with Region Ten. And we're on a better idea.
Do you really know where all this fiber is talking about those city? A decent idea. With not a whole lot of population.
No, no.
Well, it's, it gets us down the loop. Um, gets us to our main quarter. Um, cause the CNL isn't that, it gets us, if fiber go our main quarter, it gives us fiber to our. Our, our, our primary customers, yeah, are, are. The ones we need to get into and, and upgrade to the fiber day one, you know, you know, we can get them on.
And hopefully you'll get more customers.
Well, like I was trying to, you know, I brought the, the nine one one tower too, and that didn't happen. You know, or she kind of put it at the same time.
Okay. Moving on, discussion regarding the updated. Updated employee agreement for intern town clerk. There's your re- resolution. Number nineteen, series of twenty twenty five. So. A resolution of the board trustees of the town of Colorado approving an, an updated employment agreement for the intern town clerk and treasurer. They've been born in agreement.
So, by you, I have some stuff to say. We, I'm going to read a definition from, um, good old AI. Fiscal responsibility refers to using money wisely, balancing income and expenses. And planning the corner wing. It can apply to individuals, businesses and governments. Ninety dollars an hour is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. We cannot afford to keep Dusty on.
Well, what, what I wanted to say was that this was the second extension, uh, for Dusty. And I would just hope at the end, if we approve this intention, that she consider at the end of the extension, uh, to become a full-time employee. You know, not on the interim status, but you know, as a full-time employee. Appreciate all your work and everything, but I think at some point. You know, uh, we need to discontinue the interim situation and you at that point can probably decide whether you want to save or go. Uh, but I think that just, this would be the third time that we've had this. So I think at the end of this, I would ask that you consider being a full-time employee.
And I'm ready to have that discussion at any point. Um, and the only reason is this way is because the contract is expiring and. So I just put it back in front of you on the terms that we have been doing.
Right. We approved ninety dollars an hour when we had no other staff in the building and now we have four people. And we had not keep going at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year.
We have two full-time employees. Bruce is here three hours a day and Melanie floats when she can.
Mm-hmm.
She is untrained. I'm still carrying the brunt of this show.
I understand that.
And the liability and everything else that goes on. And I understand where you're coming from.
Well, you just can't. It's not, it's not doable for a town of three hundred people and the, um. Percentage of employment income that we have going out right now. So.
Well, yeah, that, that ninety thousand, or ninety dollars.
It's not a year contract, so you can't calculate it on a year basis. It's a ninety day contract.
I understand that.
Right. That's forty six thousand, eight hundred dollars.
But like Eric said, we need to be able to, uh, you know. Learn the position and so. You know, I, I don't know what, uh. Wait, you're looking at for a, a permanent position.
I motion not to approve the resolution of the board of trustees of the town of Colburn, Colorado, approving. Not approving the outdated employment agreement for interim town clerk manager. Town clerk treasurer slash employment agreement with Dusty Colwell.
Let me ask you this, this is that, is that, that, uh, per hour, is that negotiable?
Of course. But there's, there are discussion about it. So.
But well, I mean, it's. Like fifty dollars an hour, is that negotiable?
The ninety dollars an hour is negotiable. Nobody has presented anything. But a motion on the table.
I mean, I think.
So I presume nobody wants to negotiate or they would have proposed it.
Yeah.
Which is fine. I serve at the pleasure of the board and if they're not happy with me, then I will.
I don't think that's a point.
By all means.
I think the point is, is, I think that we're. We think we're paying more than what we should be now or.
For sure.
For anybody.
For sure.
And if we come up with a reasonable rate. I don't see why we can keep if you were happy and we were happy.
For sure. That's always been the deal. So I'm kind of blindsided by the, I'm just going to motion not to accept a contract. Instead of putting forth, hey, would you be acceptable to this? Would you be acceptable to this? That wasn't what just occurred here.
Well, I understand everything, but I also understand when she's.
Oh, we're discussing it right now because.
We're not.
We don't all get to go, I don't get to go hang out with the Bible bus.
For sure.
Yeah, we don't.
Your.
Never get.
Pastor, your first though.
So we don't know, you know, we don't sit around each other and.
We can't.
We think she's worth fifty dollars an hour. Somebody says, no, forty dollars an hour. Or whatever, you know, nobody, we don't sit around, uh, on our own time and talk about it. So none of us really know what options we've got as far as what a decent pay would be. Or what do you expect us to pay if you were hired full-time?
But now is not the time or place to discuss it. And I assume that from seeing the contract again, that ninety dollars an hour. Is, I mean, that's what you think you're worth and I'm just saying, we can't afford that. That's it.
The only reason the ninety dollars is charged is because of the situation I was put in. So for you to say that. Is a misrepresentation. You know exactly why that ninety dollars is being charged and it has nothing. To do with my ego.
I'm not saying it has to do with their ego.
Nothing. Nothing.
Well, we agree because like you said, you had to wear up all of a sudden, all, all of the hats, uh. We, we do give, Bruce is in here. Three hours a day, um.
Mike is helping.
So what is your proposal? And is it your fiduciary duty? What is your proposal to pay me? An hourly rate? What are you proposing?
Probably nothing you're going to be happy with after making ninety dollars an hour.
That's for me to decide, not for you.
I, it would be a discussion that we would have.
For sure. And so if you have a number and can come to the table with a number, then I can think about that number. But I can't just sit here and deal in hypotheticals. Hence why you got the contract the way you had previously approved it.
But I'm saying.
For the discussion.
Right. We're just asking, do we have a, so if we can set aside. So we have a discussion about how much to offer and see if that's well. Be willing to do for that problem.
For sure.
Or give us camera off.
For sure. That's how it should work. That's how it should work.
Make a motion or we. Um. How do you say it's? Set aside. Take, take a motion.
When, when is the contract?
Not until next month. So this was just, uh. It's new, it actually expires the middle of this month. That's why I needed to bring it to you. So we have a couple of weeks. It is at your discretion. If you all go home tonight and decide tomorrow that you don't want to have contract negotiations. Let me know.
Where are you guys at with the, uh, hiring for the position now? I mean, you're just hired for a town manager. You've got to get that position filled, but, but her position or him, Dusty.
Well.
So, I mean, I, I, I haven't been here for months.
Maybe the Dusty was just temporary.
Right.
Cause she was still had. Cause she was still had commitment to another boy, but is that my wrong?
That is slightly incorrect, yes, I have pre, I have a commitment with my previous employer, but my intention has always been.
No, I understand.
Stay on.
I understand.
Fill that permanent position. I didn't introduce the. The reason we're here is because when we went to do the contract last time, the town attorney mentioned that you could do it for a longer period. With a clause that says, if this and this happens, that rate changed. Nobody, if. It was approved the way it had been previously. Approved by the board, that's the only reason it is the way it is right now. Is because it's the current contract that I am under. If you don't feel comfortable with those terms, you by all means have every right. To communicate with me. And saying, this is what we're willing to do.
This is what's happening.
This work.
This is what's happening right now, so now we know. That the ninety dollars an hour is, is gone. Sucks, cause I'd love to make that too.
It means nothing to me, I think the amount of stress that I have absorbed in the three months, the ninety dollars doesn't cover shit. Sorry, I apologize.
You're okay, you're okay.
Yeah, 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 we're just having a discussion here, there's no need to get mad.
You don't mad?
Or upset, well, I'm not gonna tell you how to feel, you feel like you want it. But we're obviously gonna have a discussion about.
This contract takes us into six months at ninety dollars an hour, when we approved this, you were working like fifteen hours. Now you're working full-time and there's, you were also the only staff member we had left. So at that time, we had no choice, we had no option, but they give you what you wanted.
For sure.
But now we have. This office is full of, of staff members, and so. And if you're not happy and it's that stressful, I, I apologize.
But that's my issue, it doesn't have anything to do with anybody else, it's something that I've taken on. And I don't mean to hurt not make anybody, but to make cracks about ninety bucks an hour, we.
Well, all I'm saying is we can't afford it.
I understand, and I've never tried to commit you to a year or anything else.
This.
I have been there to benefit you, it is a thirty, a ninety day contract.
Okay, this is our second ninety day contract at ninety dollars an hour.
Then why have we not tried to fill that, why have we waited six months? And never talked to me about transitioning to a permanent position? Like, if that was the end goal. Why in six months hasn't anything been done to move towards that?
Yeah, the, the initial, like.
I, I, I agree.
The initial.
I agree.
The, the initial three months was. What was it, thirty, thirty-five dollars an hour then?
No. She was ninety, cause I, I'm gonna talk to you guys.
Second, that was the second.
I'm gonna talk to you guys in the ninety reasonable rate.
The first contract was not ninety dollars.
Right, it should have been.
Well, I think I just put the contract aside from the same point and asked Dusty, Dusty, if you wanna work for the town. Then we already have a position, we already have a salary schedule, and if you're willing to work. Full-time under that salary schedule, then I think that would be great. No, I agree that the ninety dollars a day, we did that, and that kind of leads into what I've been talking about, hiring a full-time town manager, because we had. Angie, yeah, did, had spring, the spring had nine hundred dollars a day, and we had her for three months. You know, and then we bring on Bruce and he's like a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour and seven hundred and fifty bucks. Expenses, I mean, where does it end?
He's not working.
So I'm saying, excuse me.
Five days a week.
I want that, I want the full, to be bringing on a full-time person, whether we think it's a two-day, uh, a week person or a full-time person. Bruce and Al Florent said that as far too many essentials need to be brought up to date. With your new administrator to be successful, well, isn't that why Bruce is here? To mentor somebody, to bring him in, and how can those person bring up the date? If you don't let them sit next to the guy and let you, let him, let that person be trained into those things they need to bring up to date. You bring them all up to date, then you shove them on and say, hey, here you go. You know, you don't do that, and that's the same thing that's happened right here, we just continue. We just continue to pay ninety dollars an hour, continue to pay nine hundred dollars a day, we continue to pay a hundred and some odd per hour. And I've been harping for the last three, four months, we need to hire somebody a full-time manager. And then Dusty wouldn't have to do all of this work, she would have somebody that would work with her. And it wouldn't be so, you know, I'm, I'm just amazed that she's hung in as long as she has, with the procrastination that we've had, and not hiring a town manager. What the hell's going on here, I don't get it. We've been paying the nine hundred dollars, we've been paying the ninety dollars an hour, I've been.
We have an interim manager right now, his name's Mike Niggle.
Mike, you know, you said how important management is, Mike is not qualified to do that job, he did it out of the goodness of his heart. And, but he has a full-time job right now, a very important one for this town, the most notable one of all the jobs in this town. And to ask him to take on more, considering his family and everything else in his life, it's asking too much, and it's irresponsible, and it's.
Well. It's asking that that's his choice, and that's, and, and if, if, it affects his family or whatever, it's not worth it, like you say, but that's.
He's trying and he's training, and we're gonna give him a shot.
That's, that's. Maybe I'll have a heart-to-heart, see if that, that's really what he wants, because I think he acquiesced to that because of the fact that he was asked to do it. And he feels that the town is in a bad spot, but who knows, I mean, you need to have a heart-to-heart, say, is this really something that you wanna do? And that, that's the thing is, is, we need to have somebody that has some experience to come on board and do it, not train somebody. To do the job.
In the meantime, he's trained for it, and so even if he does not take the town administrator position. He will be completely and fully trained. So that if we get in a pinch again, he can still step into that role until we fire somebody.
I don't want you to have a question, well, I'm like really horny, see that. That's the main problem, we're, we're on twelve, we're, we're, we're discussion.
Right, the other reason Mike was brought up is because.
Well, you made a motion, what's the second, so God, you made a motion, I'll second your motion to debate this. And we need to have some talk with Dusty and get this one on.
That's what, that's what I was saying, we need communication with Dusty.
Right.
So is that gonna be a special board meeting?
Guess so.
Or, uh. What's it called?
Or ask Dusty, she's going to. The job description and, and everything that's in place right now, and say, hire us a full-time employee in that position as a town clerk.
I'd say as a contractor, Dusty should make you an op, an op, an offer. And you guys can decide if you accept it or not, since she has gone from part-time to full-time, I guess be the right way to get it. Having been a contractor before, this way I would have done it.
But Dusty, are you, wha- what is your main, are, are you?
My fear is if we, if we go back to a thirty or thirty-five dollar an hour, then we're not gonna have a full-time person. Because when we paid a lower rate, it was not a full-time person, ninety dollars an hour is a huge incentive to work forty hours a week, that's just my opinion.
Well, like, and there again, that's up to Dusty, that's up to Dusty's side, but this Dusty wants to be the, the clerk and reporter, or miss she just want to be a firm.
It's interesting, I've done this before, remember that.
Forty years.
Fine, smart, please, Mark, oh, for that.
That, this is for the.
We're lost right now.
Are we tabling it to a date certain or a date uncertain?
Yeah, let's do it.
I have a motion in a second, that's how many minutes?
Okay, we.
So we're gonna table this, but we have to have an executive session, correct, because we'd have to discuss. Pricing and.
I, I don't think it's a good session, when, when we initially, when we interviewed Dusty for the job, it's could be, it is an open meeting. We could have an open meeting and interview her and say, yeah, here's what we want. Or did they?
I, I didn't know if we had to have a, an executive session, to have a sit-down and talk with Dusty, to see what she wants, just see if she agrees.
It's no matter to me, I'll do it, open meeting or?
I don't know, that's legal, I don't know legal jargon in that.
Yeah, our budget, it says that. We can't, there's no way to break up our job, because we had a clerk, manager, treasurer.
Well, we could never have.
All together, as one position, so I don't even know what the. We don't even know what the job is.
So are we?
We're, I'm sorry, but, you know, when I was saying we got a position, although we can't even figure out what salary is. Because on previous position was taking money from different funds. Through different ways, and one person, there was no set salary.
So the year before they broke down the jobs, the clerk and treasurer was sixty-eight thousand.
Are those the, the positions that you're interested in, clerk and treasurer?
That's it.
Yes.
The twenty-five percentile was sixty-one. The seventy-fifth percentile was eighty-four, so. We're, we're gonna have to, to discuss about it. You doubt that?
Yes.
Okay, someone's tabled this, have a discussion about it.
Okay. So let's have a vote of motion, please.
First to go, Paul?
What am I voting on here?
The, 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 like, yes.
First to price? Yes, Rusty Stalling.
Yes.
Trustee Winkle Black?
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number thirteen, trustee Winkle Black's requested agenda items presented by trustee Winkle Black. Discussion on where we are in hiring full-time, part-time town administrator. Uh, discussion on the town's procedures and hiring of town. Over and employees. That's chronic now from Derek Hamilton, Dean Ayer. And trustees, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Hey, I think we've already discussed, okay, uh, the discussion where we are in hiring the full-time. Or part-time, and you know, I mean, in the past, they've had a two-day person come in and do the administrative requirements. Or we've had a full-time where we combine those, uh. I, I think it all depends upon, you know, um, what we think we can afford and what we need. Uh, I think that bringing Bruce on and, and he can vet people, he has the experience. But like I stated earlier, when he said that, you know, that, uh, many essentials need to be brought up to date, go there. I think that that person should be hired and work with Bruce and bring those essentials up to date, whatever those essentials are. I would, I've asked him before, and I didn't really get a response in terms specifically what those essentials are. But I think we still need to advertise for the position and, and bring somebody on, and we still have Bruce, his contract goes through November, as I understand it. And so that we can get somebody to work with the town clerk, with Dusty. And, and you're wrong, because the bottom line, we've thrown out. Nine hundred dollars a day, ninety dollars an hour, hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. It's ridiculous, and we can't, I can't even imagine what, what, what has happened to the budget. So, you know, I mean, we need, you can't hire somebody until you advertise, advertise the person, bring it on, we could put it out, not only. You know, there are agencies that we get the Colorado Regionalities League and various other agencies, there's three agencies I know that we could advertise with them. And we could, uh, you could put it in, you know, I, I'd say. Daily cent for whatever that's worth, but I think that we need to advertise it, we need to start interviewing and vetting people and getting them hired. So that we have, you know, when you mentioned the number of staff that we have, really, I mean, we have Ms. White now as administrative assistant. But we only really have one person to take care of all of the other business that we have, I know that we, um. Which takes me on to kind of the next one, that, uh, in June. The mayor approved bringing, um. Melanie, Melanie Parker, okay, so that was in my opinion contractual, it's not a full-time position, it's a part-time position or it's under contract, I've never seen it. Has anybody else seen the, the terms of the agreement for Ms. Clark to be working for us? Has anybody seen that?
No.
I haven't.
I haven't seen it.
There is no written contract?
There's no.
Have you asked Dusty how she's doing?
Pardon me?
Have you asked Dusty how Melanie's doing?
No.
Oh, about.
Melanie's on the zoom.
No, what I'm saying is, I'm, I'm not, I'm, all I'm saying is the fact that. We brought her on for whatever reason, whatever the contractual is, but I mean, we need to fill these positions, we've been in limbo for a long time. We need to have a town manager administrator, one and the same, we need to have the town clerk, need to get that solidified. You know, and so then why don't we advertise? Because, you know, we brought Ms. Clark on, I'm sure she's helpful and everything else like that, but. You know, the whole thing about it is, and just I've heard it from you many times, and then the people who did the, the, uh. The, the. What we call, at any rate, it was transparency, 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 that's all I heard was transparency, where's the transparency? You know, all, we bring this clerk on, where's the transparency of that, I didn't even know until I got the message from, you know, from. From Bruce that the mayor approved it, we bring it on a contractual basis for twenty-seven fifty an hour. Okay, and then I asked, I see Ms. White working, how was that, how that big, well, we put it on the, the town's website. And she applied and she got the job, so you know what, if you look at the, the corporate job corps, you look at the school, you look at. Businesses openly, where do they advertise vacancies? Plutobal community connections, because there are far more people that are gonna read that than the town. So it just seemed to me that if we're gonna advertise for positions, that we should put it out there. Where people can actually see that we have some vacancies, as does the school, as does the job corps. As does some of the other businesses, rather than just putting it, because that seemed to me pretty selective.
Were these positions not put posted in our normal posting places?
It's told to post it on the website.
On the website.
By Bruce Smith, and that's where I posted.
On the website.
Well, there's gotta be with three places that they're actually supposed to be posted also, so.
That's for public.
That's for public notices and agendas for meetings.
But I agree, they could have advertised a lot better, I completely agree.
I mean, with Dusty, when, when we were looking for a manager, we had some good, they weren't qualified. And so we did hire them, but they had other qualifications that would have been worthy of consideration. But there was only, you know, unless you follow the town website, you didn't even know that that position was open or advertised.
I agree.
It, it was usable indeed in smother media.
Yeah, so, you know, that, that's why I had been diving on, on the agenda, we, we.
Mr.
And we need to be transparent, and if we have vacancies, then we should advertise those and, and see what kind of talent we can bring in and fill those positions. But if we, unless we get the word out, we're not gonna have that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, this is, this is Mel, this is Melanie Clark, if I may speak.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, Mr. Winkle Black, it was, it was brought up in two different meetings when you guys. Uh, offered, or when I offered to come and help out. And, and I offered to help and you voted on it and agreed to it.
Correct.
So I don't know what's any more transparent than that.
No, what I'm talking about, Melanie, is yeah, you, you volunteered, you know, I'm not criticizing you, I'm saying you volunteered, okay, so you came in and you were volunteering, kudos, you know, I appreciate that. But what I'm saying, then the turn of events turned around, now, we're gonna hire her on a contractual basis, and then they give the hourly rate. So what I'm saying is, if you're going to hire somebody on a contractual basis, why is it not put out to the public? About this opening, about this need? You know, I'm sure you're doing a great job and everything, but what I'm talking about, that's the lack of transparency, I, as a board member, didn't even see that coming. And I don't even have any idea what the contractual basis is, where's the transparency there?
It was, it was Mr. Smith that actually brought it to the board. And it was voted on once again in another meeting.
I don't remember voting on it.
Well, we didn't vote, it was just in his updates, Melanie. But we didn't vote on it, but, um.
Well, then that's, that's, I, I would have to say then that's the board's fault for not doing so.
It, it, it was not done, it was told after, after it was already done.
Well, if the board had a problem with it, they could have brought it up at that meeting when we got the update and said we need to vote on this. And I didn't think anybody had a problem with it, because nobody even discussed it.
I agree.
At that meeting.
I agree.
It's not a matter of having a problem, it's a matter of making everybody else, not just us, with the public aware. It's not a matter of having a problem, it's a matter of making everybody else, not just us, but the public aware of. We want somebody to fill this position, just like when we talked about, you know, about our our finances. How are we gonna hire somebody, you know, are we gonna advertise for that? Are we gonna put it on to Bruce? Bruce didn't seem to be jumping on that, but we need an account to take care of our budget.
Do you understand we have a CPA working for us now and that?
Why did you ask Bruce about the budget? Why did you ask?
Is the town administrator's position to prepare the budget and he's working as the?
He's not, no, he's not, he's not, he's working, he's not working as the town administrator, that wasn't the agreement. He was working as a consultant.
Wants to work.
As a consultant.
Contractive consultant because he doesn't want the title.
Not that, well, my own career wants the title, not, the title is consultant, not town administrator, and he does not have that. He doesn't have the latitude to make those decisions.
What do you think we're paying him to do?
A consultant.
Okay, to consult us on what? Town administrator affairs?
Yeah. You know, more or less, that's what a town administrator does, is consult the board, it it's a.
I don't need to be schooled on that, what I'm saying is, he does not have that official position, and he does not have the latitude, here's the. Illegal responsibility to make those decisions. Until you hire somebody and that's their title, that's the person that's able to do it. This is full of.
Let's start our next lecture.
You need them, I tell you that.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Please don't throw a race at him.
So. The last one, electronic mail from Derek Hamilton, the reason I talked to Dusty about that, I simply asked her to put it on. And we had, I mean, agenda, previous agendas, we had for public correspondence. His was a public correspondence, I think it should have been on the agenda, and that's why I asked her to put it on this month's agenda.
Thanks.
And I'll be done.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Staff updates?
Um, I feel see in your packet, there is the update for July from the insurance department, also the certificate of occupancy for the auditorium. Um, Melissa White has gotten her notary, um, telling me now I have a notary in the building. Who's been working very closely with Lary Energy to set up the town cleanup, which is currently set for October seventeenth. Flyers, postcards will be sent out, um. We're working on that, um, as an F Y I, the barrel bill, uh, the bulk water is out of order. Part has been ordered, and once it arrives, it will be fixed. Um, as of right now, we have three events booked into the auditorium. So that's good, and something just maybe to be thinking about in the back of your minds is possibly holding an open house for the auditorium. Um, inviting the public to come out for light refreshments, nothing major. Um, but to check out the building, have the mayor and the trustees there. Um, and. At your auction, so something that you all will be thinking about and maybe at the next meeting. Um, discuss that, and that is all I have.
Right?
Can we please revisit an updated new schedule that can be approved by the board? And can we please? Um, review the, right now, the rental price and contracts for every facility?
So it's two hundred and fifty dollars a a day for the auditorium, is that correct?
With alcohol, yes.
With alcohol?
With alcohol, it's four hundred.
Right. Are there any fees when somebody uh observes a park? You know, like barrel park or vanity park for a family?
A fifty-dollar half-day rent or leave, yeah.
Okay.
We just need to review all the and discuss. Maybe doing a comprehensive analysis, maybe with the other. Other um buildings, the same size and. Whatnot, I know in construction it costs like um fifteen hundred dollars for a building that size and. I'm not saying you need a comparable that much, but we need to be a little more.
You're saying it needs to be more than two hundred and fifty L?
Possibly, we need to discuss it.
And is there a damage while it's on it, any of it?
Yes.
Quite new now, though. Somebody don't have to walk in every time somebody's had a shooting game?
So as as of right now, you will speak with the attorney. Or whatever, in more, see how quick we can set up the special making.
Yeah.
And I will get a hold of the attorney and see if their schedules work, and I will advise each and every one of you via text message.
Okay. Uh, number fifteen is, I guess we're there.